Let's begin the regular meeting of Des Moines City Council. And Carmen, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present today. Tony, is there any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Take a moment, see if everybody's signed in it needs to. Okay. Okay. All right, as your name is called, would you please come to the podium here to my right, state your full name and address for the record, and please try to keep comments to three minutes or less. Our first person to speak is Ally Larkin. Good evening, Ally.
For the record, my name is Ally Larkin, and I live at 21937 Seventh Avenue South in Des Moines, Washington. And I'm delighted to be here tonight as a volunteer beach naturalist, nine-year veteran for the Seattle Aquarium, where our mission statement is inspiring conservation of our marine environment. And boy, did we do it in our 2010 Beach Naturalist season. We had 185 volunteers covering 16 beaches, oh, excuse me, 10 beaches on 16 dates, and we had meaningful conversations with 34,944 people. Now, I won't go through the names of all those beaches, because you'll see them on those brochures that I passed out, and that's one of the best tools that we have. And a majority of those 35, almost 35,000 people, this is a real tool for us when they come to the beach and we can make contact with them. And this is our new improved version for our 2011 season, so these are just hot off the press. We've done some changes in the front, which pertain more to how our Puget Sound is in trouble than what you can do about it, or you can go to learn more. And it also, as I give it to the kids, I tell them, it's the program to the beach, and that Mother Nature's pulled back the tide, and that's the stage, and inside is all of the performers that are going to be there, and their job is to find each or as many of them as they can. And it's just incredible what that does for the kids and the education, and when you look at what's happened and how this program has grown on this beach, even with all the construction in the marina and the beach park, we had 1,954 visitors to the Des Moines Beach this year. So, and we were very thankful that Joe Duzenberry, he provided a locker for us where we could store all of our beach naturalist supplies. And we would hope that when all of the construction is through, that we'll still have a little closet where we can put all those supplies to help all those visitors that come to the beach. So I just wanted you to know what a good effort we're making here in Des Moines, and we'll be back next year if you'll have us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a very good job, by the way.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I also put in the back there the new seafood watch cards, which...
That's good. Thank you very much. Mr. Gill, are you wanting to speak now or later?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that did not sign up that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and start with comments from the public. Carmen? Uh, not comments from the public, Boarding Committee reports. Yeah.
Um, I'm hoping there's somebody here who is a little bit better prepared than I am. Tomorrow night, I'm pretty sure, is the spaghetti feed at the Senior Center, and they would love to have as many people as possible show up and enjoy a good spaghetti dinner. You shook your head. Do you know what time it starts?
Five to seven thirty.
Five to seven.
It typically starts at five and goes to seven.
Five to seven thirty.
Okay, from five o'clock until seven thirty at the Des Moines Senior Activity Center.
Ten dollars.
And it's ten dollars.
[laughing].
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Dave?
Yeah, there was a Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting this evening, and we talked about school zone photo enforcement, which the committee has taken a look at a couple different times, and we're having some information, some financial information brought back, some traffic studies. We're done on 16th Avenue in front of Woodmont Elementary, and also on 24th Avenue in front of Pacific Middle School and Midway Elementary School, to get some counts, to get an idea as to whether or not it's feasible from a financial standpoint. Financial analysis can be brought on, brought back on that, to see if that is a doable thing in those areas. And the council is looking for the possibility of initiating it on 16th with an eye toward expanding it if it proves successful at reducing speeds, making the zone safer for children, and if it pays for itself. So, that was the first topic we talked about. We talked about potential boundary adjustment on the western approach to Kent-Demoine Road with the city of Kent. No, it doesn't deal with commercial properties. This is, this is the roadway east of Pack Highway South, but the westbound lanes, there's been some confusion over jurisdiction, over a couple of the lanes that were produced as part of the improvements that we put in with Pacific Highway South.
Yeah.
And so, we may see a request for that. It'll be months before that ever comes to us, because a lot of discussion and jurisdictional discussion's going to have to go on before it ever gets back to us. And then, we took a second look at the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, which will be coming to us as part of the city's CIP, which projects are being funded, which ones are not, which projects are being shoved out further, and the assumptions being used to fund them. So, again, it was preliminary look, and the council will be seeing that in the next few weeks when the CIP finally gets rolled out to us. And that is it.
Right. Melissa?
I have no report.
Okay, Matt?
I don't really have a report, but I have a question about something we received in our boxes. It's a letter dated October 1st from Jeffrey Owen, the business manager for the UAL 32.
For what?
UAL 32. It's the plumbers and pipe fitters union.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
And the way the letter's written, the one thing that I'm curious about is, we're part of a project over here at the SCORE facility, and I don't know how subcontractors are chosen and things like that, but I was, I'm curious if, it does concern me if we do projects, and I know we have to bid out to the lowest, most acceptable and compliant bidder, but I'm wondering how those, how those bids are placed, and if we do have workers in the local area and they're not getting that work, that does concern me a little bit.
Let's, let me see if I can help you with that, and staff can probably explain a little bit about this one, but you know SCORE makes, is made up of seven cities.
I do.
And our participation in SCORE actually isn't the same as to some of the other cities, but maybe someone on staff could address that, Tony? This has been going on for a while, by the way. This is nothing new.
And I'll, I'll give you a generic response, and actually, just because we have an item regarding SCORE on the agenda tonight, Penny Bartley's here, and she can give us a little bit more details.
I was trying to save you from it, Penny, but no.
But here's the bottom line: When any governmental entity bids out a project, the general is allowed to bring in whatever subs that they want, as long as they have the capability to do the work. If there is, it's a federal government project that requires certain amounts of DBE, WBE sort of participation, they have to do that, and then they have to pay them prevailing wage. To be able to specify certain contractors or the like is very difficult, if not impossible, to do. In this particular case, the subcontractor for the type of work that the organization that wrote that letter represents is being done by a firm out of Bremerton, I believe. So it is a local sub that is doing that type of work. And Penny, if you want to add anything else to that, please do so.
For the record, Penny, you might introduce yourself.
Penny Bartley, I'm the director with SCORE. And yes, I understand that all of the cities receive the copy of the letter that you have in front of you this evening, and there has been two, two informational pickets that have been out at the site. They both arrived several months ago. We saw them in the spring for a day, and we had not seen them for four or five months, and then they came back out on August 26th, the day that we had the open house. And similarly, we have not seen them since that specific day. And Lightig, who is the general contractor, has set up what is called a dual gate, so those people that are doing business with the picketed contractors there have to go through their gate. The other neutrals can go through the other side, they do that. They have frequently had to deal with informational pickets. And as Tony Pasecki explained to you, the one contractor, the mechanical contractor, is from Bremerton. It's my understanding they do not work outside of Washington State. And the other thing that we do when we're up there is we usually look at license plates just out of curiosity, who is there of the workers at the site, and I've never seen more than one or two plates from out of state, so it appears that all the vehicles that are there are from local residents.
I might add, too, you know I live fairly close by 200th there, so I pass that quite a bit, and only a couple times have I seen any activity out there, and it was interesting to note that when we had the open house, they had them out there en masse. No one knew that they were being there, they were going to be there, and they certainly didn't announce it. So it wasn't like we were trying to avoid them or not acknowledge them, we simply didn't even know they were going to be there.
I wasn't trying to address that portion of the letter. My perspective is that when we have local projects, we want to do the best we can to keep those opportunities in the local community and, you know, help folks here get back to work.
And we did bid this as a low-bid project, and so we bid it to a general contractor, which is Lightig, and then Lightig is free to engage in contracts with any sub-tier contractors that they choose. And we, there is not what's considered a labor agreement on this project, so as Tony explained, they're still responsible to pay prevailing wage to all of the employees, and we just can't intercede in that contracting relationship as the government. We can't tell them who they have to contract with. So it's up to the general contractor to find suitable subcontractors. And they solicited bids from a number of contractors, and I believe that in most cases, they chose the lowest bidder as well, but I know in some cases they did not, and they went upon work history of the subcontractors and picked those people that they had had positive working relationships with.
Okay. Obviously, I have more to learn about these things, but on this, I'm not unfamiliar with how bids are awarded and so forth. I just want to make sure that we are leveraging the opportunity to make sure that our, the opportunities we do have go to local workers.
I imagine you've probably had some experience with the school board over those issues.
I did.
I'll bet.
I did. And, you know, again, I just think, I'm really looking at doing things, being, being aware of how to do things in a, in a way that, that, well frankly, it's the right thing to do. If you've got a local project, you try and, I mean, you want to employ local people unless you can't find that talent here. And I understand about bidding laws and so forth. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah?
Yeah. A number of council members and a lot of members of the community attended the, you know, official opening of the Des Moines Creek Park Trail, and was the administration going to be making a report on that?
No, feel free.
Okay. According to our Parks and Rec Director, Patrice Thorell, there were maybe 160 people who were there in attendance at, for part or all of the event, and it acknowledged the completion of the trail from Puget Sound up to South 200th. Quite an accomplishment. There were myriad number of people who were acknowledged there, because it involved multi-jurisdictions, as well as a lot of construction and other people, as well as council members, past and present, who helped move the project along with their votes. And it was a beautiful day.
Perfect.
Scott?
I have no reports.
Okay. Actually, I was going to report on the same subject, but thank you, Dan. It was indeed a beautiful day, and I don't know what's been going on lately, but all these activities that we've been having in the city, they're down at the farmer's market and elsewhere, have been extremely beautiful days, and for this time of year, that's almost a miracle that this could be pulled off. So I'm really grateful for that. And by the way, Matt, Melissa, you got your name on the first plaque.
She's got him on the...
Congratulations. Yeah, ah, yeah, but, yeah. Anyways, any admin reports, Tony?
Yes, sir, a few things quickly. I wanted to announce that Assistant City Manager Lori Erickson has received a scholarship to go to her very first International City County Management Association Conference down in San Jose in a few weeks. That scholarship will pay for her registration, give her stipend for lodging and meals while she's there, and she has figured out a way to get herself there and back, I think using some of her own frequent flyer miles. So there will be no cost to the city other than, we won't have her here working hard the way she usually does for a few days, but we'll do our best to cover for you.
Like she covers for you?
Yeah, exactly. Pardon me?
She'll be on her cell, won't she?
Absolutely. Also, I wanted to note that we had put in for consent item number one, three replacement pages for that item. I think we put that in your box several days ago, was it not?
[inaudible]
Yesterday, sorry. So, these, I think are just the schematics that go as part of the description of the areas that are being part of the eminent domain action. And then finally, the last item on the agenda this evening is a presentation on the EV-5 Regional Investor Program. I must say, the Marion's did a very good job putting together an agenda item with attachments that explains the program. We are not asking council to authorize us to go forward, trying to find a designation for the city. It appears that two projects in town are going to be going for that designation. We've indicated to them, if they want the city's support, please make a request. If they do, we will bring that forward to council for your review and approval. So I'm going to suggest we not have that presentation this evening. I think the agenda item is very self-explanatory, but if you have questions, please let Marion or me know, and we'll do our best to answer those, and if they require a little research and any written response, we can do that and distribute that information to the entire council.
The original item was placed on the agenda because it was believed at that time that maybe the city would become what is called a regional center. But because both developers have opted to go ahead and do it individually by themselves, because they feel they could do it in a more expeditious manner, the city is no longer considering having to become a regional center. So it's one of the reasons we probably don't need to have the discussion on it this time. Anything else? Okay. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk to read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor's Clerk. Item number one is draft ordinance number 10-162, amending eminent domain ordinance number 1456. The motion is to adopt draft ordinance number 10-162 relating to the acquisition by eminent domain of certain property located in the city of Sea-Tac, describing the public convenience, use, and necessity of such property, providing for the condemnation, appropriation, and taking of such land, including the mode of payment of cost of acquisition, and directing the city attorney to prosecute such action by amendment of the condemnation petition currently pending, as authorized by ordinance number 1456. Item number two, proclamation of October 18 to 22, 2010, as National Business Women's Week. The motion is to proclaim October 18 to 24, 2010, as National Business Women's Week in Des Moines. And that, Your Honor, concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there any council member that wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar? Scott?
Yeah, item one, I guess.
Remove?
I have questions about it, but it's probably best to remove it.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
So moved, second.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Scott, item number one, please.
The motion that was read says that draft ordinance 10-162 is amending eminent domain ordinance number 1456, and I really don't see that anywhere in the body of the ordinance, that this is amending something.
Matt?
Councilmember, I think you're correct. It's not, it's not amending the prior ordinance, it's, it's amending the petition that was the subject of the prior ordinance.
So how would the wording of the ordinance be best, or of the motion be best corrected?
Motion to adopt, adopt draft ordinance 10-162 relating, just the, relating to the eminent domain. I think it's just the title on the top that's, that's incorrect.
Okay. So the title should just delete the amending, language?
Yes, I think it should just say draft ordinance number 10-162.
Oh, right. As opposed to what's here?
This is right.
Then I'll go ahead and move the motion that was read under consent calendar item one with the correction to the title of the item.
I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. First order of all business will be council rules, and I'll try to briefly describe where we ended up. And I know it seemed a little bit convoluted to a lot of people, myself included, so I spent quite a bit of time looking at the, particularly the last four minutes of the council meeting, and also got staff to weigh in on it. And basically, here's where we stand. Actually, Matt had called a question, which was on the main motion, which was to enact rule 37. Time ran out, and there was no second to Matt's calling of the question. So that's where we left off. It was Matt calling a question that time. And for those of you who may have forgotten, rule 37 is the rule that Councilman, or Mayor Portem Kaplan had introduced. If you need a moment to go to that in your packet. Everybody see what it is?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I had some confusion about this last time, and Dave spoke with me after the meeting to make it clear that there are two motions here. One to enact a rule that establishes the concept of the program, and then another motion establishing the specific policy. Is that correct, Dave?
Correct. Well, isn't one of those on the appendix, referencing the appendix?
Yeah, and I was unclear about that last time, and being as my attempt to put this in Title IV didn't work, I'm going to support putting it somewhere.
I see that expression on your face, Matt. All right, is everybody up to date now? You all know where we're at? Scott?
Well, no, because the wording of the rule confuses me. It's one thing to say, by rule, the council intends to have an awards program, and then to, through separate action document or whatever, set up the rules of the program. But the wording of the rule includes, "The awards shall be made in accordance with the spirit of Des Moines Awards Policy attached to the appendix to these council rules," which would seem to incorporate...
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to treat that as if it's a policy question. That's the only way I can do that.
Or a process question.
Process question, because the question has been called, that's where we left it.
Okay.
And the next thing that we should be doing is a second to that. So if I can treat it that way, if staff is willing to answer that question, okay? So I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and treat it as that. But before we do that, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to call the question, so we have sort of a procedural question here. Go ahead.
Well, what it would say to me is, the, the process and the policy for establishing the award is in the appendix. Now, I don't think it means this one, this policy that we have sitting here, because you haven't adopted that yet, but where you're going to go to look for it is in the appendix, and that's what it's going to be called.
Okay. All right, so now, we've called a question, and again, just a reminder, when you do this, it takes a supermajority of five votes to call the question, so my next thing is to ask, vote on the calling of question. So all those in favor calling the question, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, that passes, so we go directly to the main motion now. And Dave, if you want to take a moment and brief everybody again on your main motion now, would be a good time.
Just as a reminder, that this is to establish a Spirit of Des Moines Awards Program where the city recognizes the dedication and accomplishments of its citizens, both for activities that they do over the course of time, as well as over the course of the year.
Okay. All right, there is no further discussion on this. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's everyone for except Scott. All right, now, as mentioned earlier, a motion needs to be made and seconded to enact Dave's appendix to rule 37. Dave?
I move to adopt the Spirit of Des Moines Awards Policy as described in the attachment.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Dan?
I would have some amendments based on discussion we had last week, that these awards, the way the policy is written, are awards from a committee, not from the council, and that having an award from the council is appropriate since it's in council rules. So my suggested amendments would be, and I don't think they're, they change the, the final decision to that of the council. So under the section that says nominations, second sentence, instead of nominations shall be reviewed by a community-based review committee, and recipients will be chosen, I changed the word recipients to finalists. word recipients to finalists. And then add a sentence at the end, there will be at least two finalists for each recipient position. And then on the next page, under review process, again, change the word recipients to finalists, and add a new sentence at the end that says, recipients shall be chosen by the council from the group of finalists.
Could you repeat this, what was just said, again?
Under review process? Okay, under review process, it would change the word recipients to finalists. So, in other words, the review committee are not choosing the, the people who receive the award, they're choosing finalists.
Okay.
And then the last sent, then an added sentence to that, that review process, the last sentence, which is the key sentence, recipients shall be chosen by the council from the group of finalists. It doesn't change the timing, it doesn't change the fact that there's a committee or the composition of that committee. And then just for the, a last point of clarification, under organization award, again, since the committee under this system would be making the final recommendations, but the council would be making the decision, and chain, so I would change the wording, just one word, the word discretion to recommendation. So, it would be, an honorary award may be given each year, not at the discretion of the review committee, but at the recommendation of the review committee. And then again, it would have to follow the process under, you know, how it was chosen from review process, which means the council would do the final vote. It'd be presented to the council, would be given some choices, not, we didn't have a choice like, this is, this is the only one we're giving you, and we will, we would make choices. And to me, that means that not only have these people been vetted by, vetted and originally, you know, chosen by a committee of the public, but it's the council who makes the decision based on what I'm hoping will be a public presentation of who the finalists are and why they got to be there.
Those suggestions are acceptable to me.
So, it's a friendly amendment, it's acceptable to both the maker and the seconder?
Yes.
Who's the seconder?
We were simultaneous.
Which one of you'd like to go on record? All right, it does, Melissa, it's okay.
I'll go fine with it, yeah.
All right. And I'll recognize Melissa then. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous then.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're not done, though. Dan, I believe you had some issues.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, I have a bunch of things, and let me start.
Let's take each one separately.
Yeah, oh, yes.
We don't bundle them up like before.
Exactly, exactly. And I, I would like to, some of these may be more favorably received than others, but I'm gonna start with 4B, because my, my recommendation for 4A depends on 4B.
Go ahead.
So, I'm gonna be making a motion that changes the way a mayor is chosen in the city, and that would be such that, oh, and I need to clarify that this would not start until January of 2012, because we already have a chosen mayor.
Right.
And Mayor Protem under the existing system. So, this would not start until January 2012. And the purpose of it is to change it basically from an election to a rotation, where every council member would have the opportunity to serve as mayor for a year. And it would be, the way it is written is, it's written so that everyone gets their chance. Basically, for example, in 2000, January 2012, if I was not here, Dave would be the next mayor. If I was here, I would. And it would just be for a year. And it would continue to rotate. I think everyone, does anyone have any questions about it? All right, so I'm gonna move to amend rule 4B, to allow a mayor to be selected on a rotating basis based on years of service, as written here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Yeah?
There is one added sentence that needs to be put in. After I was reviewing this today, there would be a question as to if the next person up for mayor, if the next two people up for mayor had the same length of time on the council. And so, I put in a sentence to clarify that, which would be a third sentence, after, in case of a tie, the council member with the most years on council shall be next up. And then it would be, it would have to read in order to clarify that, if a tie still remains, then position number prevails. So, it would then be by position number. So, that kind of takes care of any extraneous difficulties with that.
Further discussion? Yes, Melissa?
While I appreciate the concept of a rotating mayorship, because I think it does allow everyone the opportunity to serve as mayor, I can't believe, I'm already heading into the 10th month of being a city councilperson, and would anticipate that it would take a good year as mayor to kind of get your sea legs under you in terms of procedure, setting up the agenda, checking in with staff. So, in that sense, I would probably not be voting yes on this motion unless I hear something else in discussion, only because for the sake of continuity, the thought of having a mayor in place for two years to kind of keep the momentum and the vision of the council moving in a forward motion, instead of kind of, you know, let's say, two steps forward and three steps back type of, of thing. So, that's just kind of my view on, while I, I understand it, and I, and I like the concept of it, and think that it could work in a perfect world. I don't know that we ever are in a perfect world. So, I like the idea of if, as a council, we put someone in the position of mayor, that they are there for two years to, to kind of help keep the continuity and, and help keep the ship on course.
Carmen?
I believe that each of us has differing strengths and availability, and ways of working with the council, knowledge of the rules, ability to deal with the public well, and would always want to have the ability to choose based on who was best qualified at the time, not who had been here longest.
Dave?
Yeah, my only comment is, I tried stripping out the tenure provision that had been inserted by other council members during the course of the discussions on the draft rules, in terms of the mayor being around for two years and, and Mayor Protem for a year. But those are now in there. And again, I didn't think they were necessary, but I think that they provide that, basically, you have people with a little bit of experience under their belt already there, to be considered for mayor and Mayor Protem. So, I don't see the amendment as necessary.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to a vote then. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I will not then have a motion on 4A, because that depended on 4B. 4C, we don't need. 5A, I would change, I would move to change that. We've had issues with proclamations issued by mayors without concurrence of the council before, and I have to say, one of them was with Scott, a number, a number of years ago when he was mayor. Today, we had an example of a proclamation that went through on the consent calendar, and that's the process I prefer to see, rather than have the mayor making proclamations that may not be suitable according to the rest of the council. So, I would change 5A to read, the mayor has the authority, the mayor and the council have authority to issue proclamations for a variety of purposes. All proclamations shall be approved or authorized by the council, as it was today. So, that would be my, my motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
I guess I'm trying to understand, the exist, the language here says that the mayor has the authority to issue proclamation, that is proposed by the committee, says, "No proclamation shall constitute official city actions unless approved or authorized by a majority of the council." So, I'm, I'm trying to understand the distinction between what you're offering, Dan, and what's, what's written there, because it would require city council approval in order for it to be, to carry some weight.
Do you want me to answer then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to...
Because a mayor can make a proclamation at the beginning, that whole thing, for example, which we all agreed with on, I don't have it in my packet anymore.
Women's Business Week.
The Women's Business Week. Apparently, we all agreed with that, but under the exist, under the verbiage as it stands, without the amendment, then the mayor could make a proclamation of some sort without our approval. And although our rules may say it's not official of the city, the fact that the mayor is making that proclamation does have that appearance. And so, it eliminates that issue, that problem.
Yes, Matt?
I'm, I'm not sure I read it that way. The first sentence is, "The mayor has the authority to issue the proclamations." It's kind of for a variety of purposes. But then it says, "No pro, the proclamations issued will not constitute official city action unless approved by the council." So, it's kind of like the mayor has the ability to set the agenda, but we, none of the actions on the agenda are, are official city business unless it goes before the council and we vote on it.
Okay.
So, I think it's a, the way you read it. I, I'm hearing the same thing.
Okay, well, I would, I would offer, may I?
Go ahead.
I would offer that the verbiage that I have is clearer, is more specific, and eliminates that question.
Scott?
The way the rule is drafted before the amendment, the mayor could issue proclamations every day of the week. And as Dan suggests, whoever would read those would think that they're statements of the city, because it says, "City of Des Moines, aye the mayor," type stuff. Proclamations are not official actions, they're statements by whoever who makes the proclamation. So, when I raised the issue we should have a rule about this, was because of the prior experience, where there had been a history of the mayors issuing proclamations. I had issued one, and the city attorney said, "Well, we're not gonna defend you in a lawsuit because you had no authority to issue one." Well, all of the predecessors had done that, and it had never been an issue of whether they were authorized or not. So, the whole point of the rule is to make it clear what the authority is about proclamations. Now, I would wonder what the attorney would say based on the rule, as if the city got a suit, because no official action was taken, but a lawsuit was still filed, would there be defense or not?
There would be defense.
Some of us know what you're talking about, and some of us...
First of all, I'll explain, I wasn't the city attorney. You know, I'm reading from the mayor's handbook, and, and one of the things the mayor's handbook sets out specifically is, the mayor has, may also issue proclamations for a variety of purposes, and that's where this language came from. Now, Councilmember Thompson is correct. That, that's the difference in the language. He can issue proclamation, and proclamations under his own name, but to be authorized as city proclamations, it takes a vote at the council.
Okay, you still have the floor, Scott.
I made my point.
Dave?
Well, it just so happens that it was November 20, 1997, that, that the mayor at the time issued, or attempted to issue a proclamation regarding Bible Week, because that was the night I was sworn in on the council. That's the reason I know. I, I think the language that the committee came up with provides the protection relative to ensuring that it's the council that signs off on the, on the proclamation, and that if the mayor does sign a proclamation on their own, they're on their own.
Yeah, pretty much right. Dan?
I would like to clarify that the city attorney, you did read us something from the mayor's handbook. That mayor's handbook, I assume, is what was issued by AWC?
It's actually the Municipal Research and Services Center.
Oh, yeah, okay. But I believe that that handbook is meant to refer to a strong mayor. There, there was some confusion about that at a meeting that Melissa and I went to earlier this year. And that handbook, I mean, if you look at the introduction, it says, "Read this carefully, because although some of this may apply to mayors in a council manager form of government," this, this pamphlet is may, is meant to apply to a strong mayor.
I can tell you, the section I'm reading, there's a ceremonial role of mayor.
Okay.
So, that, I don't know that that, that is very different between strong mayor and, and mayor council, or mayor manager.
I realize this is my second time, so I'll make my last comment here on this particular item. I think one word might, might solve the issue. If we put in, and I would suggest it as a friendly amendment, if we altered this to say, "The mayor has the authority to introduce proclamations for a variety of purposes. No proclamation shall constitute official city actions unless approved or authorized by the majority of the council." Because essentially, that's what the mayor does. They introduce the proclamations, it comes before the council, and we support it. Or don't, but that's it. So, I think one word there, changing issue to introduce, makes the point.
As a substitute motion, or what?
I would offer that, first of all, offered as a friendly amendment to the, to the current.
Seconded me. I would, I would accept that as a friendly. It certainly changes it from issue to introduce, which is a different matter.
Okay.
Comes closer to my intent.
Any other?
As the seconder, I will accept it, but it would be better if it said, "Introduce whom?"
Introduce what?
To whom?
I'm done.
You're implying that it's introduce the council, but...
It's our council rule. The mayor, what we're saying is, the mayor has the authority to introduce, it's like putting it on the agenda. I mean, I...
As long as that's understanding, then...
It's always subject to interpretation, but, I mean, with the guidelines that the city attorney has presented and so forth, and, I don't know, we've been working on this one for 10 minutes, folks.
Actually, I think the secondary to this was Melissa, not...
I would accept the word introduce.
Oh, okay. I think you're talking to the wrong person here.
Sorry.
I didn't remember. All right, I'll just chime in on one thing. I'm a little surprised we're even discussing this, because currently, whenever there's a proclamation that's made, it's put on the consent calendar, and you all approve it. If you don't like it, you're gonna pull it off the consent calendar and tell me I'm a bad person, or whoever the presiding officer is. And that's it. So, I'm really kind of confused as to why this is even an issue. To me, it's a non-issue. But, so be it. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That passes, with Dave and myself voting aye.
The next motions I have, you're not gonna see before you, and the city attorney advised me since it was gonna be to delete sections, that I could just do that on my own, which I'm doing, and it applies to rule 5B and C. And I would move to eliminate those, and I want to inform the council, or remind them, that we function under RCW 35A, we're a code city. And we are a type of city that is a, just as I was beginning to have this discussion with the city attorney, we are a council manager form of government. And the... And the duties of a mayor in such a government, right from the RCW, are, the chair of the council shall have the title of mayor and shall preside at meetings of the council. The mayor shall be recognized as the head of the city for ceremonial purposes, that's the discussion we were just having. He or she shall have no regular administrative duties. So, under Section B, where it says the mayor has the lead in representing Des Moines to those from outside the community who are interested in joint ventures, that is not under Washington Code. The city manager has that function and should be doing that. The city manager should be involved in any negotiations with other municipalities, other countries, et cetera, and should be the person who is informing the public about issues affecting the community through public notices, to newspapers and so forth. These are not the roles of the mayor in our form of government. Yet, and the city, the council, cannot change the form of government by ordinance. It would have to be voted on by the public. So both B and C are indeed, to my reading, city manager functions under Washington Code and should be removed. So that's my motion.
Discussion? Carmen?
I'm, I'm not speaking to code necessarily, just that it seems to me that each time we have been approached by people who were wanting to talk about doing economic development in town, they expected to talk to the mayor and asked for meetings with a variety of people. I don't see anything compromising about that. I wondered, and I'm not suggesting this, this, but if it, if instead it says the mayor has the lead in representing, if it just said has the authority to represent, it doesn't say the only authority. But it seems like we should not tie anyone's hands if they are willing to put the effort in to try to create more possibilities of economic development.
Melissa, and then I, okay, I'll make some notes here. Melissa, you're next.
I, I do think that paragraphs B and C, the state code already says that the mayor has the ceremonial lead. And I, I will, I will probably vote with Dan on this because I think of it as someone of, as matter I, who I like to think that we have the brain power to function as a mayor. I don't know that we have the time to be a ceremonial leader out in the community, meeting with foreign dignitaries. And while I think we have an exceptional staff at this point, who would step up and do that, Marion would do that, and Tony would do that, there may come a time when someone with limited time and ability is put in the mayor position, and city staff then says, no, that's, council rules, you go have that discussion, you go take on that project. And so I think that if the city code does allow for that ceremonial meeting and shaking of hands and, and promoting the city, yeah, I'm uncomfortable with having to spell it out that much more. So that's all I've got.
Okay, I see Scott next and Matt.
I agree with Dan that this language goes too far in suggesting that the mayor has a role other than ceremonial purposes. And on the contrary, one should be able to say that some of this could be done by any council member. And it somewhat precludes other council members from meeting with developers or other things, or other city member, or other city councils or things like that. So I would support its removal.
Matt? And then Dave?
I, I'm coming up with something in, in the middle, and I'm not sure exactly how I would word it. But I do know that when one entity wants to, like, if, I don't know, it's when another city wants to meet with the City of Des Moines, they expect both the CEO, our city manager, and the elected representative. And we just got through having a discussion about the mayor being our elected representative. However, I, I agree with Melissa in that, that the mayor is not the only representative. But if the, and if the mayor is not able to attend, the mayor pro tem, or, you know, could represent, or another chosen council member. I, I guess my, my concern is that there is an expectation when entities are coming together to work on progressive things, that they involve both the elected representation and the senior administration. And I do think it starts with the mayor, and the mayor is chosen by our rule, elected by the council. And, but it doesn't say that the, but where, I guess I'm, I'm seeing something in the middle, is that if the mayor can't attend, there's nothing wrong with the mayor pro tem or someone else. I'm a little uncomfortable moving all the way to the other side that, where it's the city manager and whatever council member you can grab. Because I think, you know, the council is, I mean, every elected body I've had the good fortune to be part of, does choose its leadership based on their abilities to represent the, the body. And I think it's important that whoever is chosen, you know, the, the council, you know, has supported that. So we have our mayor, we have our mayor pro tem. If that's not, then they're going to have to pick somebody else. But hopefully, between the two of them, when they agree to take that spot and represent the council, they agree to work out how to get these things covered. So there's something in the middle here. That's, that's, that's my point. But I, and I, we need to acknowledge the fact that there has to be, if there's something that happens in the city, they may talk to, the press may talk to Tony, they may say they want to understand the elected perspective, they want to talk to the mayor, the mayor pro tem. And we do need one place to funnel things. So I think that's important.
Dave?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with taking this out entirely. I, my substitute motion would be to have subsection B change the wording to say, the mayor may represent Des Moines to those from outside, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in B. And under C, I would propose the mayor may inform the public, the media, the staff about issues affecting the community, and the mayor may act as spokesperson on actions taken by the council. That would be my substitute motion.
Okay. I don't think it's going to be accepted as a friendly, obviously.
I'll second it.
Okay, there you go.
But then I would like to consider an amendment to it, a friendly amendment.
Yes, Scott?
Is it clear what I proposed?
Okay.
Speaking to the.
Substitute motion?
Is that what it's called? May allows it, but doesn't require it.
Correct.
I think some of the argument is whether that's getting in, depending on what's being done or said, you're getting into the affairs of the city manager as opposed to the ceremonial affairs. Perhaps it would be better if the substitute motion were, just to put in the language of state law here, or at least out of the mayor's handbook that said the mayor is there for ceremonial purposes, you know? And clearly, meeting with dignitaries or visitors is ceremonial, but, you know, you're not the negotiator. So.
Let me, let me speak to that. And I'll, and I'll tell you why I make it may instead of, instead of doing away with it entirely. And, yeah, it's a ceremonial position, okay? But there's a lot of things at play. People do expect to talk to the top politician when it comes to a number of things in town, where the mayor will be able to give a gauge on whether or not there is support or direction related to some sort of proposal or discussion that comes the way of, of the council and the city. A city manager, I don't think is going to be reticent to pull up a, a, a mayor who is in a, you know, from a council manager form of government when they're overstepping their bounds. And, and I don't, and I don't, I suspect Tony's had to do that with this, and prior mayors on any number of things, and is not reticent to do that. And so I don't, I don't see that as problematic. The other thing is, any of us individually, as an elected official, has the ability to communicate with people out there that, to help promote things that we believe are in the best interests of the city, okay? And in the end, it still takes a council majority or consensus for us to be able to achieve anything anyways. So I don't have, I don't have the heartburn that, that Dan obviously does with this. And, and I applaud efforts on the part of council members to try and improve things in town, knowing full well that you have to build some sort of a consensus or a majority in order to accomplish something. I think, I think, as discussed, I think Matt's correct that the mayor goes hat, I mean, goes hand in hand with the city manager in terms of providing both the political face and the administrative face of, of the city, and put them together to people who need to see both. For that reason, I don't, I don't have heartburn with that. And I'm, I am somewhat taken aback by just eliminating it entirely, which is why I make it permissive and not something that would be required of a, of a mayor to do. So that's my rationale behind it.
Uh, Matt?
To address item C, I, where you said the mayor may inform the public and so forth, but the second sentence, the mayor is the spokesperson on actions taken by the council. Again, we had this prior discussion about the, you know, having a focal point, an, an elected voice. It doesn't mean that they're the only spokesperson, but if the mayor is available, they presided over the meeting, they have the information, they are closest in contact generally with the staff and the city manager, and frankly, I think that sentence ought to stand as it is.
And my only argument against that is that the mayor may choose not to be the spokesperson. Scott, when he was mayor, may have chosen a different interaction with the media and the public than his predecessor or his successors. So I, I think that's a.
Okay, so how about the mayor or their designee?
Well, we're talking about the presiding officer's responsibilities in this section. So I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Again, you're, so you're saying the mayor may be the spokesperson?
May act as spokesperson on actions taken by the council.
Actually, next was Dan. Then we'll go to Scott.
Okay. I'm not going to be able to support anything other than what I suggested. I truly believe that sections B and C are, are not sustainable under state law. The alternatives that are being offered, the alternative being offered additionally does not make clear the council members as a former discussion that, or disagreement that I had with Dave and Carmen revealed, is their claim they can talk with whomever they want about issues with the city, and that should be allowed. So making the mayor the focus for that does not appear to be the right thing to do. Now, I have questions. Reason I'm bringing these questions up, and the reason why we may have some cloudiness about this, has to do with how our city has been functioning. And the way we've been functioning may itself not be completely consistent with correct procedure of law. I've often talked with Tony about issues where I don't think he was fulfilling his function. And we talked about it, we had discussions, and there may be times when he hasn't been asserting his position as strongly as he should be and could be. So I want to get back to clarity and what the law says. If we want a strong mayor who's more than ceremonial, then we do, we cannot change that by ordinance, but we could go to the public and say, gee, is this what you want? It's another form of functioning. And if that's what, what people want, fine. But that isn't the, to me, it is not the form of government that we're supposed to be operating under. And I wouldn't want to tie your hands, Melissa, from being able to talk with somebody about, you know, what your opinion is, or if you have an opinion about how things are going, or what direction you think we, the city should be going in on one matter or another. I don't want to, you know, specify the may or may, and then maybe by inference, you're not entitled to do that. So the clearest thing, and to me, the most consistent with state law, would be just removing B and C. By definition, the mayor is the symbolic head of the city and has ceremonial function, which means like, the, the event we had yesterday, the mayor rightfully was in charge of that function. That was his function, to dedicate the, the trail, and to cut the ribbon, and to make some comments at the beginning. That's his job. And he did a good job. But these other things are not part of function, and we need to think about this carefully. That's where I'm coming from, and I'll listen to what other people are saying, but.
Point of clarification?
Go ahead.
Counsel, are we violating, are we operating outside of the law in your opinion? And are these two items that are in our council rules in violation of the law?
First of all, I have to read it before I give an answer. But this is very specific as to economic development. Now, I can't remember if, if the law is that specific, so I just simply have to read it and I could give you that answer. And then on the second one, we get a little closer. The, it is, it should be, huh, I don't believe that the mayor is the person to inform, the, the mayor can always inform the public, but is it, is that an obligation of the mayor? I don't believe it is. I, just given the form of government, I don't know that the mayor would be the first person to know of something that the public has to be informed about, say, in emergency. Now, clearly, the manager would tell the mayor, and I'm assuming, you know, there would be, the question is, who would, who would present the evidence, but, or who would present the information, but I don't know that that's a mandatory obligation. But the second sentence is consistent. He can speak on behalf of the council, but, you know, as the, as the actions taken by the council, but so can any council member.
Did you have, yeah, go ahead.
Our form of government certainly is a council manager form of government. And as the CEO, I have certain duties and responsibilities and authorities. And some of those have to do with enforcement of our development codes when it comes to people who might like to do something in the city. My interpretation of the language here would be to make it, an act consistent with that that is in our state law. So if the mayor is representing the city in regards to an economic development issue, or someone who wants to talk about doing business in the city, if it has to do with. or someone who wants to talk about doing business in the city, if it has to do with, I think Mayor Protem commented on the political side of an issue, I think it's appropriate for the mayor to be talking about that. If it has to do what the council's vision is for, say, Pacific Ridge or downtown, I can relate that, but I think it was also said it's sometimes more powerful when it comes from one of the elected officials. But if somebody wants to come and talk about what the code says regarding how to, how building needs to be built, what the building codes are, what the setbacks are, all those sort of things, that's not an appropriate role for the mayor and our form of government to be talking about. And if that's what the individual wants to talk about, which quite frankly is the vast majority of the time we get phone calls, I don't call the mayor for that. That's what staff's role is. We have pre-council meetings, we have informal discussions out in the lobby during our, our question and answer hours, we get phone calls and the like, but when it's a question about the, the political atmosphere of the city, I can only go so far in really describing that. And it's from my perspective as the appointed CEO for the city. So while I can understand the interpretation could be taken to mean it's kind of falling into that strong mayor form of government, since we are not a strong mayor form of government and yes, you need a, a city manager's going to stand up and say, mayor, that's not your role when it comes to economic development, that's the way I would interpret these things.
Why don't we just come right out and say it? You're, you're the city manager. Do you feel that I step on your toes and you're doing your job or vice versa? Are, are, do you feel that our roles are clear? Is it who does what?
Maybe that's for an executive session.
Well, let's, let's, you know, we're discussing a lot here that, and we're not getting down to the, cutting to the chase here. Again, I have to question myself, why did all of this come about? Why is, why are we having some of these discussions? And it clearly, I think most of us know what the answer to this is. I'm tired of hearing this strong mayor comment and it's being directed at me. It has nothing to do with future mayors that we're talking about here. It has to do with the seated mayor. Let's be honest about this. He's paranoid as hell over what, some of the things that I'm doing when it comes to economic development within the city and talking with developers. That's what this is all about.
I take that as a personal offense.
And you know what? That's exactly what it is, though.
You were on the committee that put this on here. It wasn't in our rules.
Exactly. And we might as well just face the fact that whatever you're doing right now is, should not be because of what you think this mayor is doing. It should be done for what you believe that future mayors should be doing. And I have a feeling that this is getting a little bit too close to, well, we're doing it because we want to send a message to this mayor. I hope you don't send a bad message here. I really do. Carmen?
Um, I guess I'd like to make sure Tony and Pat both hear what I'm saying. I, I do see personal beliefs in action here about roles and I don't think it should be directed at who is currently mayor. I was wondering if there is a way to revise, not get rid of, but revise B and C so that it defines the balance between administration and the representative of the council.
Makes a lot of sense.
And come back with something that is still there, but revised to show where the roles lie and how they interact, if that doesn't complicate it too much.
Well, I'll answer from my perspective. I can always wordsmith things. I think I'm pretty good at that. I think what this section is trying to say is that in his ceremonial capacity for, for the city, the mayor represents the council and the city. Two people are interested in doing development in the city, doing business in the city. The city manager is responsible for the administrative side of enforcing the city code, business licensing and all those sort of things.
Right.
And I could craft something in here that does a better job of differentiating that role. I think the same thing for section C. Clearly, the mayor or any other council member can be designated to be the spokesperson for the city when official comments or official reporting of the council's actions need to be taken. As far as informing the public and staff and everyone about issues affecting the city, I think that can be a joint role between the manager and the mayor depending on the issue that's coming up.
I would be comfortable with your crafting language to make it work the way you're talking about.
Okay, I think Scott, you.
Yeah.
I was on your list.
Yeah. See how many names are on, quite a few.
I think there's three things I want to cover now. I was only going to cover one.
Okay.
Let's start with the procedural question first, just so we make sure what the motion is and the action.
Yeah, we got a sub-motion here?
Yeah.
Substitute motion?
A substitute motion, if it passes, just then becomes the amendment that you're then, you would then have a vote on it. Some people mistakenly think that when you vote for it, that that causes it to pass, but it just causes it to be substituted. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if it fails, then we're just back to the amendment that had been presented?
Amendment as presented.
Okay. Now. I feel like I'm.
Go ahead, no. You have all this true, you are.
I'm trying to talk about A law.
Okay. So, I agree with the concept of Dan and that the role of the mayor and the city manager form of government is ceremonial. And to the extent that this is new language, it's not existing language that we're trying to amend, it's entirely new language. One could ask, well, why is this new language being put in here, which makes it look as though we're expanding the role of government of the mayor perhaps beyond that ceremonial role? And that's why I had suggested, well, maybe we should just put in the state law that speaks to the ceremonial role. And perhaps that's the thing thing Carmen is trying to do is say, describe that ceremonial role, but with a few more words. So, um, since there's an amendment to the amendment, to substitute the amendment, you know, it.
Yeah, I lost it.
You know, it, if that was the consensus of council, that that's what we wanted to have, is something that was clear based on the issues of state law about what the roles of the city manager and the mayor are and to suggest that staff go try and write a new substitute paragraph, maybe we would all be happy with that if we knew how to get there with the motions on the table.
Personally, I'd like to see them all simply withdrawn and we just have the staff go back and put together what legally and, and any other concerns into a draft for us to look at. That's what I, ideally, that's what I'd like to see. Because you've got a substitute motion on the floor right now and I'll bet you anything, nobody has a clue what, where that's going. Anybody else?
It sounds like we have.
You still actually have.
Well. I think I am the seconder of the proposed motion for which there is a substitute motion on.
Yes.
So if I were to withdraw my second, would the whole thing crash?
No.
Well, the substitute motion wouldn't be such.
Substitute motions was in front of us.
Okay, so.
Trying to go back up.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
So you wouldn't think it would be appropriate to withdraw them second on the first motion?
I believe that would be, could be ruled out of order.
Okay. Well, I was trying to figure out how to get us back to the start.
I think that path got lost a while back. But yeah, there is a substitute motion, which is the issue that we should be discussing at this particular time. And I see more hands coming up.
I just have a point of order. If this were, if a motion were made to remand this back to committee for better wording, would that get us back to where we need to be on this particular section?
Would a motion to table, would that?
Which would take precedent?
Now, the motion to table might. Yeah, it's, it's a privileged, oh, I think it's a privileged motion. The motion to table is a privileged motion.
That would take precedent.
That would take precedent.
Dave, if you were unwilling to withdraw the substitute, I would withdraw the second and then Matt's motion to remand this back to committee could.
Well, see, I, I, okay, here's, here's the problem I'm having, Scott.
Okay.
Under rule five, the second sentence, the mayor shall have no regular administrative or executive duties. How much clearer can it be?
I think it gets confused with the addition of B and C.
See, I don't, I think, I think saying that the mayor may represent the city relative to, to particular issues just clarifies that the mayor can do that. And I don't think that it runs afoul of state law or I wouldn't support it.
But there seems to be some question regarding that, if it runs afoul of any state law. Because I, I truly sensed from you that you didn't have an answer to that question.
I, I think you sensed correctly.
See?
Perhaps.
I'm feeling extremely uncomfortable with the whole procedure right now because I think it could bounce right back at us.
That's why I would like to move the table and remand back to committee so we can validate it legally.
And anything?
Tony can put his wording in and we can deal with this section and we can move with others.
Anything that takes precedent over any.
All right, second.
Okay. So that was a motion to table?
Yes.
A motion to table simply means you stop discussing it, you move on to the next item and then you got to pick it back up later.
Okay. Motion to table, you said?
And that was.
And remand to committee?
And remand to committee.
This section. And bring back at a date to be scheduled by the mayor?
Yes.
That would be, could that be part of a?
That's about three separate, those are separate motions. Motion to lay on the table requires a second, there's no debating, it requires a majority. Motion to refer to committee requires a second, is debatable, is amendable, requires a majority.
We can do it in phases.
We'll do it in phases.
Motion to table.
Move to table?
Second.
And did I hear it takes a majority?
Yes, no debate, no amendments.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next motion.
Move to remand back to committee?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That too, is, is there an aye there? That's unanimous. Okay. Let's go on.
So all my other amendments are for later?
No?
No.
No, 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 just, just this one.
Just this one?
Only this one.
Okay.
So, rule five, we're done with and we're moving on?
Yeah, we are.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do is give you a 10-minute break and come back and go to the next one.
Thank you.
Next item, well, Dan, you still have the next item up.
There, there was a procedural question raised to the city attorney.
Sure.
Whether the motion to table.
That is.
Tables the whole item or a sub-part of an item. And her, her, her book isn't very clear.
My interpretation was that these are separate items and therefore I was treating them as separate items, so we tabled that particular item.
But it's the whole ordinance that we were in the process of working on, so.
So we don't have a clarification on that?
No, wait, wait a minute. I believe that the city attorney has had a chance to look at, since I was the one that made the motion, I'd like to know what the.
Um, I'm reading from the Roberts Rules of Order and this is the in-brief version. And it says, "The purpose of the motion to lay on the table is to enable an assembly by majority vote and without debate to lay a pending question aside temporarily in order to take up something else of immediate urgency." Yeah, and so the, the, it's ambiguous as to whether the pending question is the immediate motion or, or the, the main motion.
But to clarify my motion, the pending item was council rule number five.
Correct.
So I did not, my motion was not to table the rest of this process, just council rule five. And the remand to committee should support that.
And as seconder, that was my understanding as well.
Just so long as there's the understanding that action on the main motion can't be made since the piece of the motion is on the table.
So we can work our way through though. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I, I think I follow that. Sure. Yes, Ken?
And I'm willing to do either, as long as I know I have an opportunity to make my other amendments, if not now, at a date in the future.
You can make them right now.
Okay. The next one, oh boy, is under rule eight A, a special meeting may be called by the mayor or any four council, or any four members of the council. And I wanted to change the wording to a special meeting may be called by the mayor and, and three members of the council or any four members of the council, except to convene for the purposes of calling an executive session. And I'm making that as a motion.
Is there a second item motion?
Dan, if you could explain the.
Okay, just the, a special meeting is usually like a retreat or a special meeting we have on a Saturday and, um, so I was just wanting that a majority of the council wanted to have that meeting. If, if one was going to be called. And that way, it might also be at a time that was convenient for more council members.
This one gets tricky. Right now, we have a rule that says any three council members can cause an agenda item to be added to the agenda.
Correct.
And we don't run afoul of the open meeting law because only three council members are causing something to be added to the agenda. To have four members call a meeting, that would almost have been an implication that four members would have had to talk and had a meeting outside of the meeting process to decide to have a meeting. So.
Okay, I can, I can remove that if that's the case. I don't want to run afoul of those rules.
Your current rule says that four council members may call a special meeting.
So it already says that.
And it already says that and, and the city attorney would have to help you on this one. But in essence, what that does is allow a majority of council that wants to take an action that maybe the mayor doesn't want to, call a meeting to get it done. Quite frankly, it often involves the employment question of the city manager.
So I understand.
That's already the rule.
Yeah, it's currently a rule. That's right.
Right now, the rule says the mayor or any four members. And it's not clear how the four members would call it without having had conversation about it. Now, I'll agree, the way it's now written, the mayor and three members of the council would imply that the mayor can't call a special meeting anymore. He has to do it with the three members, which.
That was my intent.
Okay. You know, depending on how we want to fix things, you know, maybe it's the mayor or any three members and, you know, that would take away the four members trying to hold a meeting, but.
Personally, I think anytime three members want to do anything, you know, add an agenda item or call a meeting, it's going to get done. You know, I don't, I don't think any sitting officer in his or her right mind is going to try to detail that. So again, I'm, I'm trying to find out here what the, the actual intent is. And Matt, you are next. Scott, you still have the floor, though?
I'm good for now.
Okay, Matt.
Well, first of all, I think it's important that a mayor be able to call a special meeting. As I stated earlier, the mayor works closely with the city manager. The city manager says to the mayor, we have an issue that we need people to get together on, it's a special meeting, we need it now, then frankly, I think the mayor needs to have the ability to call a special meeting. As far as any four members of the council, I think that's a protection of the, you know, As far as any four members of the council, I think that's a protection of the, you know, built into our rules that does include any four members of the council. It doesn't mean that they all met at one time. The Open Meetings Act does allow council members to talk to council members one by one, and that does not violate the law. I see nothing wrong with A as it stands today.
And from an operational standpoint, the way that would work is one or two council members would approach staff, me, and say, "We would like to have a meeting, and we believe that you need to poll the council to see if there's another two that are willing to do so." Or they'll ask me, and I'll do it. Well, if the mayor says no, but I know there's another... The four want to, then I confirm with those four, and then the meeting's held. I know.
Okay.
Okay.
Dan? Well, no one seconded it, so...
No, Councilor Thompson did.
Scott? Oh, okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all David motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay. Okay, my next amendment goes to Rule Ten, and I'm going to use this opportunity to point out that given out to us was... On our desks here were three pages with green having to do with time. And this has to do with a motion that I believe Dave had made? Yes, originally about when we were going to have meeting, when we need a notice. And so this was just to confirm that, and I'm bringing this up now only because it affects the amendment I made, which I am incorporating with the new timeframe for Rule Ten.
And this, with the green...
Yes.
Does incorporate the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then I'm incorporating that into that, my Rule Ten, because I had gone from the five working days to 72 hours, and now we've got it back to the five days, you know, with Friday. So that's great, as far as I'm concerned. But I did want to add in our Rule Ten study sessions, no final council action on ordinance or resolution shall be taken at a study session, which I believe is part of the study session rules. It's what differentiates a study session from an ordinary, regular session. A study session is a type of regular session, but one that is meant to be a little more informal and where no final council actions. That doesn't mean we can't take actions. It just means we will not be taking the final action on an item. One of the actions might be to remand something to council.
Where are you in the wording?
Am I amendment to Rule Ten? Not that, no, not that sheet, but the sheet that was part of your original packet.
I have this, but it's got strike-throughs and so forth. I've had versions of the package.
Okay, my amendments were put as an attachment to last week's, and it was not included in this week's, but basically it just...
Well, I have the same thing, but he's not reading from that document.
This is where...
Thank you. So if you could just take us to the wording.
Exactly.
Prior to it.
So the wording prior to it that leads up to it is, "The purpose of study session discussions is to allow council members to be made aware of impending business and allow informal discussion of issues that might be acted on at a future meeting." And then add the sentence, "No final council action on ordinances or resolution shall be taken at a study session." And I believe this is in accordance with state law on study sessions and... Maybe not state law, Pat's making a face. But we did talk about this, and this is what... One of the things that differentiates a study session from a regular session. We've not always been following that, and I just want to put this, make it clear in the rules. I mean, otherwise, for example, today was a study session, it's become a regular session because it doesn't really meet the criteria for a study session.
Was this seconded?
Who seconded that? Well, actually, he hasn't.
Isn't he motioning?
That's my motion, to include that sentence.
I'll second. None?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm in support of the amendment because study sessions should be what that means, study. I think where we get into trouble is the very first sentence. Says, "Regular council meetings are held during the first and third week of each month in accordance with rule two, may be designated as a study session." And I think the trick here is, is the meeting we're going to have designated as a study session, or is it just left as a regular meeting? Clearly, our agenda tonight looks much more like a regular meeting agenda. I know there was a time where, well, geez, we need to cancel the study session and then have the notice of a regular meeting, where you don't really need to do that. You just need to make it clear whether this meeting is being designated as a study session or not, and what it takes to designate a meeting as a study session. But I would agree, if we're actually into study session activity, which is roll up your sleeves and deal with an issue, that the expectation shouldn't be a final action that night, so...
Matt?
Well, there's a couple of things we could do to address your point, Scott, and then one thing, well, and possibly yours, Dan, as well. One is that when we're called to order, we could identify in the agenda, we could just state for the record, it's a regular meeting or a study session. That very clearly designates that. Tonight was initially given to us as a study session, and there are changes were made to indicate it as a regular meeting. The other thing is that I know that it's this body's, or has been this body's practice for as long as I've observed it, and that's several years, to, in study session, kind of show direction by a vote, which is a little, you know, which gets a little cloudy when you are in a formal session like now when we're taking action. So it... What I've seen done in the past is that votes aren't taken in a study session, but direction is asked for. So what happens is when an item is put on the table, it's discussed, it's, you know, staff informs the council, council asks questions, the staff indicates the kind of direction that they're looking for, and the council articulates, well, you know, it's kind of the general consensus here is that we would be more in favor of you pursuing this path than that one, but there's no formal vote taken.
That's not a final action.
That's what I mean. It's, there is no final action when you're providing direction. So I think the thing is that, you know, however you word it, I think in practice, the indication of a vote in a study session does give it more of an appearance of a final action. So if we avoided that, I think that would be... Or we had some means to state for the record that the council direction, or the staff requested input or direction in one particular area, council direction by consensus is the following. So something like that. But anyway, I... It's helpful for someone like myself who has been around other entities to see the vote go away there. I will admit, that's one area that I have been uncomfortable with, although I don't know that we're violating that... It is clear to me that we're not taking action, that the vote is an act of direction. It's just, for me, it gets a little gray.
So I guess, two questions. The first is if, well, three questions. First is, if there's some sort of a settlement proposal related to some activity that comes to the council, it's not adopted by resolution or by ordinance? So action could be taken in that circumstance? Is that correct?
That's correct, by motion.
Okay. Second of all, there are resolutions or ordinances, an example of which is the score ordinance that came to us last week, but because of some technical difficulties, wound up having to be postponed, where two weeks would have been problematic. So would that, that would require, under this proposed rule change, that would require redesignating the meeting as a regular meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, and how much notice do we have to give in advance of changing the meeting from study session to after the rule, you know, presuming that the rule changes we have or adopt?
Well, you'd have to go...
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, the maker of the motion to adopt the rules as a whole was Councilmember Scott. Who was the seconder? Or maybe I have it...
You're talking about the very original main motion to adopt the rules?
Crap, last week.
You and Carmen seconded.
I don't think I made the main.
Or whoever, or whoever made it.
You made the motion.
I made it, and Carmine did second, okay? This amendment's acceptable to me. Okay.
All right, it's a friendly amendment.
It was meant to be a friendly amendment. Sure they all are.
I want a clarification just for process. Part of our discussion has been around whether or not the session is either a regular session of the council or a work-study session. Is it not possible to post with the appropriate notice, "The council will be meeting on such and such a date for a regular session from such and such a time to such and such a time, or a work-study session from, you know, seven to eight-thirty, and then enter into regular council session from eight-thirty to ten if we needed to get something done?" It doesn't have to be one or the other. We can have combined sessions, or combined activities on the same night, different types of meetings on the same night. Is that not true?
You can, but if it's a regular meeting with a regular agenda like we have it put together tonight, you can still put discussion-type items on that agenda where you're not expecting any final action of the council, where an issue is discussed like you would in study session, but because you have an item that you have to actually take final action on, designation of the meeting is just changed to regular versus study.
Okay.
And if what you wanted to do was spend time talking about an issue first before you got on to the business of the meeting, then the mayor could change the order of business, or council by motion can change order of business. Just because we have things ordered that way, you don't have to do them that way if you, as a council, agree to change the order for that meeting.
And theoretically, if we adopt the rule that by the close of business prior to any session, we're going to have the approved agenda before us, we're going to know well in advance of the 72-hour timeline whether we have items on the agenda we need to make motions on anyway.
Quite frankly, while you're talking about 72 hours, you've required us to have an agenda and to have all the materials ready the Friday before, or five-day business days before a special meeting, so that 72 hours doesn't really apply.
So we'll know a week ahead of time whether the first meeting of the month is going to be a study session or not.
That's correct.
Second.
Further discussion? No, it was accepted as a friendly amendment.
I would like to go to my next. The next amendment that was in the packet last week is moot. It was about seating arrangement, and for the failure of a different amendment, that one is no longer meaningful. The next one is an amendment to Rule Nineteen A, and this has to do with the, either the amount of times or the total time that a council member has to speak to a motion. Earlier this year, we were told that we were going to be held to two comments per motion. Roberts Rules has a couple, has a couple of things in it that can help us with this. It generally states that 10 minutes should be the maximum time an individual should have to speak to a motion. They recommend two speeches per motion, although Roberts Rules is meant to apply to many circumstances and frequently to large parliamentary bodies, where you would definitely want to limit the number of speeches, and where discussion, such as we are having tonight and have had before, is not necessarily expected. Roberts Rules does allow for changes in the number of speeches if the body so desires. And I feel that, and we have ways to stop discussion, as Matt has done last week, so there are ways with a supermajority to halt discussion if it seems to be getting nowhere or if it's becoming repetitive. So I would change Rule Nineteen A speaking to the following. Speaking to motion, after the motion is put and before the next item is read, a member shall be able to speak to the previous motion. Questions and answers by members of the council are not considered as speaking to the motion. And then I would put B, each member may speak for 10 minutes on any given motion. I wouldn't change C there. So that means that you'd still be able to talk more than twice. There may be times when it's appropriate, and again, in common discourse, we are trying to find solutions to difficult problems. And for example, even looking at the rules tonight, these are rules that we're going to live by for years to come. Granted, we can always change them, but we're hoping we're not going to have to after we get through with this process, that we'll be able to live with these for quite a while. So it does seem reasonable to be able to have those discussions, but it also seems reasonable to put a maximum time limit of 10 minutes per person. And that's my motion, to change the rule as I discussed.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. I don't know that Dan's motion would go far enough. We were told earlier in the year that Roberts Rules of Order says there's a limited two, so the sentence was just copying Roberts Rules. If the sentence goes away, somebody can still say, "Roberts Rules governs with a limited two speak." I think what Dan's trying to say is a council member can speak multiple times, so long as the time that a council member uses doesn't exceed 10 minutes.
Total.
And that's what I would perhaps suggest Dan maybe add that to his motion. You know, as council debates and talks and discussion ebbs and flows, as an example, Carmen could raise an issue, and she could speak, I could speak back to her, she could speak, I could speak back to her, and then Melissa could raise an issue. Well, Carmen and I can't speak anymore, even though a new issue has been raised. You know, so to say you only get to talk twice, we don't have speeches quite like the legislatures do when filibustering is going on and all those sorts of things where time limits the speaker, I don't think. So I think Dan's motion would work for most of what we do, so long as it was clear that, you know, may speak multiple times, and then we'd know that somebody wouldn't try and enforce the two-speak limit.
Matt?
Just want to make sure, Scott, you were done?
Yeah.
As someone who's actually tripped up on that two-limit, I'm actually in favor of it. I'm sorry. You know, I guess my thought is, when a motion's put on the table, we all have the same opportunity to consider it, and ante in, we can ask to speak at any point, we ante in our initial thought. If there's debate that goes on, it often does, well, I know it does me good to sit and listen to the issues that go back and forth, as long as, I mean, the chair does say, "Are there any other comments before we call the vote?" So I feel like I know what my window of opportunity to enter back into the discussion is, and it causes me to think through and prepare. There are some times I would present a counter option that I might make a note here to make a counter option, and I'll find some other council members have done it. So it's a matter of not... I think the rules guide to a healthy debate format, not an argumentative-type format. So personally, I'm in favor of what's in Rule Nineteen at this time.
Is there anybody else to speak with, Dan?
Yes. Again, in favor of, I would... Yes, again, in favor of, I would, I would put in, you know, members may speak multiple times, where, I put that where it was, the portion was crossed out, is that all right with my secondor?
Yes.
Okay, so I would do that. Again, rather than have stilted discussion, I think normal discussion is reasonable, and I would rather err on the side, in other words, to, I would rather err on the side where it takes a supermajority to stop the discussion if it's going nowhere, than force a supermajority to allow discussion to continue. So, that's really what your options are. And my option would err on the side of allowing a little more freedom of discussion, and that's where I'm coming from.
As a, as a, let me tell you what I see some of the problems it can be. A little historical perspective, of course, this came up because we didn't have anything in our rules, and as a result, when you don't have something in your rules, you have to vote your default, which is Roberts' Rules of Order. Whether or not I particularly cared for that or not, that's nothing to do with it, just the way the rules are. This one I'm struggling a little bit with too, because this would now mean that the presiding officer, whoever that person may be, now would have to try to keep calves on every time that you talk, but not only that, but how much time you talk, and then total it up for a total of ten minutes. That's really mission impossible, unless you're sitting here with a stopwatch and go, "Okay, before you start, okay, you just use two minutes." Ask them to use five. How do you do that with seven people? I don't know how you do it. I don't know how it could be enforced. It, it sounds good, because you're not limiting the person's right of speech, but as far as, I can guarantee you, someone's going to come up to the presiding officer someday and say, "You gave that person fifteen minutes, you gave me eight." Why? Because you didn't talk it. That's a problem, it's going to be a problem. The minute this goes into effect, you get yourself a problem. And I personally would want to be the person holding a stopwatch. Now, there are some cases where council members actually do have on their desk this system where it's like red and green lights, and you can control that, actually, but we don't have a system like that, that would require someone physically timing you. And I don't know how a presiding officer can do that, do everything else that he or she is asked to do every year, really. Real difficult thing. So, that's my two cents when it comes to something like this, but I'm also sure that's the best way to, to get around it. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing on all those in figure of the motion, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye. My next amendment is to Rule 22, and that's 22G, which is redundant, because it's already a restatement of what's in Rule 6, so I would move to delete Rule 22G. Correct.
What's the statement?
Where are you?
I'm looking at the new version.
Okay, I'm looking at one from a couple of weeks ago.
Council four members shall constitute a quorum.
It's redundant to which?
Let me, let me look at the current version. It's still in the, it's still here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. I mistake, thank you.
Those four members are needed to constitute a quorum for taking action, that's already stated in Rule, Rule 6.
Is there a reason why this was added in the rule process?
What section is it under, sort of voting?
Staff, committee members.
Would this indicate why?
You learn.
Does this indicate why it's here?
What's Resolution 525 S11988?
That's, my guess is that was a resolution that amended the rules in 1998. Why this is underlined, I don't know, but, yeah, Councilmember Sherman's right, we address a quorum in Rule 6, so the section's not needed.
Okay, that's acceptable to me.
Okay.
Okay, it's incorporated.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, this one isn't in the, the forms you were given, it relates to Rule 26, 26A, which is, was eliminated by the committee, and I would like to restore it, so I would make a motion to keep it, and I'll just read what it says. "Council member may in open session request of the presiding officer that the council study the wisdom of enacting a particular ordinance. The presiding officer then may assign the proposed ordinance to a specific committee," and it says "of," but I think that word is supposed to be "or," "the committee of the whole for consideration. The committee shall report its findings to the council." The reason I would like to leave it in is because it allows a council member, you know, at any time during discussion, or maybe during their three minutes' time at the beginning of the meeting, to suggest some legislation that the council may want to consider, and presiding officer may, doesn't have to assign it, it's a permissive.
Okay, I saw Carmen, did I see your hand up? Yes, and then Scott.
Well, is there a second? There may not be.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Was there a second? There is no second? All right.
Okay, dead for lack of a second. Okay, then, I've got, these next two amendments are meant to sort of be considered together, and it's regarding Rule 35 and 36, and we're going to have to change the new Rule 37 if we don't, you know, do some, you know, do something with these. But basically, Rule 35 is about audio recordings of meetings, and it relates to meetings of the city council held here, that an audio recording would be made, and Rule 36, when we did video recordings, then adds that all regular meetings at this location should be on videotape. Well, the whole thing about videotape is, we don't videotape meetings anymore, and I wanted to also include special meetings in the section for audio recording, understanding that we may not always be able to video a special session depending on circumstances. So what I, what my motion, and these two would have to be taken together, because they, they work together. So the motion is to amend Rules 35 and 36 as follows. Rule 35 will now read, "All special meetings of the city council shall be recorded on an audio recording device." And Rule 36 would now read, "All regular meetings of the city council shall be recorded on an audio and video recording device and shall be cablecast within the city." And this accomplishes a couple of additional things that the current rules do not. One, it specifies special meetings will at least have audio recordings, and two, all regular meetings, even if they're not held here, such as, for example, we're going to be having a regular meeting up on North Hill soon, that's not a special meeting, it's a regular meeting, that, that video be included so that our citizens can, who have now gotten used to seeing our regular meetings on cable, and actually, even though it doesn't specify it, we have always been showing these on our website as well, and older, older videos are accessible on the website. So that's the reason for altering those rules, to sort of modernize them and allow the public a little more entree into what we do.
The motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it. Well, I, I think it.
Could be more enthusiasm.
It deserves discussion.
Okay. Well, actually, let me go by order, I saw Carmen and Scott.
On Rule 35, it seems to me that when we have had meetings in other places, there have been little microphones taped all along so that it is, that the audio is being recorded, not just here. But, other than the statement, I wanted to ask a question. What kind of extra cost would there be to also have it be able to be done as video to play on Channel 21 if we were not here in this chamber? Is there a significant factor there?
The, the meeting we're having up at the Simone Church at the end of the month is going to be recorded by the same company that does, who supplies somebody here, and I think it's going to be right around $400 total, when you add up rental of the equipment, the setup time, the recording, the takedown time, and the editing, it's at least $400. So that's to do a video recording at a.
Of one meeting that's away from this site?
Correct. And it's, and as far as the microphones you've seen at some of the, say, the Saturday morning event, meetings we've had, we've had a minute-taking company called Our Lady of Letters come in, they charge $35 an hour to be at the meeting and then to transcribe minutes. But we've only used them when we didn't have any other individual available to take notes, to take notes and then minutes. If this rule were to pass, I would suggest we just purchase our own audio recording system, they're relatively cheap, WCIA has one, and I'd just find out where they got theirs and order the same thing.
Scott and Melissa?
I understand the objective that Dan's trying to make here, but I struggle with the balance between hope and government and the cost to that. As an example, a few months ago, we had a joint meeting with the city of Federal Way in one of their buildings, it was a conference room, I think there were maybe one person from the public and one or two newspaper types were.
That doesn't fall under the video.
So, so, I would struggle, you know, to me, I struggle with the cost of the $400 to TV, even a meeting in the city but at a different facility, especially in these times we're struggling with budget. And I think, to answer your question, Tony answered it almost, you know, those microphones are not recording the meeting as a record, they're the stenographer's notes, you know, that's just for, for that person to refer to. And even then, if there were audio recordings of those meetings, they're going to be mixed quality based on the sound of the room, how we're sitting, and all of that, so you might hear the one person right next to it and never hear anybody else. So, I understand the goal, but its implementation will be unsuccessful unless we spend a lot of money, and I'm not in favor in these tough times of spending a lot of money.
Melissa?
I think this whole taking meetings off-site was one of my campaign priorities, and I think back to sitting through school board meetings, when every other meeting, they would take it out of Iraq and put it in one of the elementary schools. And the gymnasiums would be full of families who came out, and it was probably the only school board meeting they had ever gone to and ever will go to, it's because it was in their own backyard. And so the thought of us as a council being in Redondo and Woodside, North Hill, other parts of Des Moines besides here, we're going to reach out to members of our community who don't even know there's a Channel 21, but they're going to come to see a city council meeting because we're at their community center, or at their congregation, or, you know. So I feel like the expense of video recording, it, it's not a necessity in the sense that we are going to extraordinary lengths to have our meetings in front of the public, but in a different manner.
Yeah, let me speak to that too, because I'm glad to bring that up, because that's the one that I was struggling with here too. As you know, you did encourage that, and the first one we're going to have is going to be up on North Hill, do you wonder how I did that? Anyway, I suspect it probably will be successful, and if it is, then we do plan on having more and more of those in the following year. Of course, with that will come an increased cost, and habits, just like that, so it is something you have to consider when you're looking at this. But I do agree, I think that is going to draw an awful lot of people, maybe only from the neighborhood, but that's okay too, because then other neighborhoods will see that we're doing that, and will look forward to, desperately, we're going now down to, but, now we're going to go here. You might see a lot more people in your eyes, because we need to be fair to them, and we'll be blessed. North Hill is providing dinner for us, I mean, excuse me, the church is providing dinner for us, but we shouldn't expect that all the time necessarily, it may get us, among others. Again, we've got to understand.
Yes, so, in reply to some of the comments I've heard, in the case of the meeting in Federal Way, that was a special meeting and there's no video requirement. I thought about that, and that there would be places where that just would not be feasible. And in the case of having the meeting in the community locally, which we have done in the past, past years, not everybody up on this council will remember that, it's a good idea, and I am in full support of that, but while we're making ourselves accessible to that group of people, we shouldn't be then becoming inaccessible to the larger number of people who do watch us on cable or on the internet. So, there's no reason why we can't do both, is reach the people locally without cutting off the people who otherwise watch us. One of the reasons perhaps we don't have a lot of people come to our meetings is they know they can watch, watch us on both cable and on the internet, and I, I'm sure that everyone up here, you know, supports open, accessible government, and audio and video technologies have allowed people unprecedented access to what we talk about, so they don't have to necessarily just rely on what they might read in the newspaper or on a blog. They can actually see the entire action or hear it, and I think that is an important function that we can offer our public, and I don't really hear general disagreement with that.
Do you have Matt and Dick?
Some of my comments are going to echo Melissa's, because, again, I was serving on the school board, we did have what we called an away game, where we did get out in the community and, and there were faces there that I never had the opportunity to see at, at a regular school board meeting. There are lots of reasons why people are not in the audience here, the meeting starts at 7:30, they have family obligations or whatever, but it is, we did find that when you have a meeting in a community, out in the community, that they, they, that's a special time, they make that effort to come and, and meet their electeds and hear, and see how we do business and so forth. So, I, I'm, again, along with Melissa, have really supported that. There is a cost, and we, we did not videotape those meetings, we did, we did audio-record everything. Again, it's, to Scott's point, it's generally so you have a record of, of the meeting, and it could get, I don't know what, what it would cost to have a system that would have ten microphones attached to it, plus one for the audience, but, you know, I think audio is sufficient when you're out in the community, the away games that we're talking about on this body is, well, a couple a year, maybe, maybe three or four. I do think they're important, I think it's important to get out to the Redondo area and let those people know that they are part of Des Moines, and we're glad they're part of Des Moines, it's important to get up on North Hill, it's, you know, I, I think those are important things, it's a large city, and we need to kind of move around and be as accessible as possible. I understand Dan's point about saying, "Well, they watch us on the internet," or, you know, Channel 21. I've had many people say, "I'd like to watch your council meetings, I can just never find them, I don't know when they're on." I, I think those, we don't put anything on the bottom that, that I, at least that I could find, that rolls across and says, "You'll see it at this time." It is published in some of our, on our website. But what I would recommend is, I don't know if it was. But, what I would recommend is, I don't know if it would satisfy as a friendly amendment, but on Rule 35, "All meetings of the city council shall be recorded by the city clerk on audio, on an audio-recording device." That should suffice for whenever we meet at an away game or not in this facility. If we're in this facility, "All regular meetings of the city council held at the Des Moines City Service Center at the address stated are recorded on video," that way it doesn't matter what the format is, "and cable cast within the city." Those would be the amendments that I would propose.
And Dave, is that your hand up?
Matt just offered up some amendments, so...
I presume they would not be accepted as friendly amendments.
Well... May I speak? Well...
I have a procedure there.
So, do I just need to make an motion? I offered them as friendly amendments, so I have to...
Is that how you offered them?
That's how I offered them.
I need to find out if the maker's sector are okay with it.
As the maker of the motion, the audio recording of all meetings would sat, except, it still doesn't specify special meetings, but it would...
It's all meetings. Doesn't matter what it is.
Okay. That would meet one of my criteria. The one that it doesn't meet is doing videos of regular meetings that may be at other facilities. So, I'm tough on that. I'm not sure.
I'm going to need to make a decision on my other... We just look at it as a separate...
Let's look at it as a separate motion.
Do I need to make it separately, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. My motion is to amend Rule 35 that "All meetings of the city council shall be recorded by the city clerk on an audio-recording device." And additionally, Rule 36, "All regular meetings of the city council held in the Des Moines City Service Center at 21630, 11th Avenue South are recorded on video and cable cast within the city."
Second?
Did I hear a second? Carmen? Okay. All right. Discussion, then.
Procedurally, I would imagine this is a substitute motion, then?
It is.
Okay. I'm probably in support of this motion versus the nuance of the one that Dan had, which is all meeting. And the only difference, as I understand it, is all meetings being recorded versus just meetings here in City Hall.
All meetings are audio-recorded.
All meetings are audio, but, which was what Dan's motion was anyway, I think.
Right.
I'm not sure if we agreed on that. He didn't accept it as a friendly. But, on Rule 36 is where I think we part ways.
Just one thing as a question to the attorney, and it actually happened. We had a meeting within the last half-year where the video guys didn't show up. Sorry, you didn't hear us back. But, would that mean we couldn't meet? Would all go home? Or do we need to put an exception in? And we'd met by candlelight when the power went off, so, you know...
Hey, what we get to look forward to.
So, then the recording device stopped, so...
Wouldn't have to do that if we had a generator.
So, how do you handle those things?
Well, providing for an exception would do it. Otherwise, it just stands as it reads. It says, "Shall be recorded by the city clerk on the auto, audio-recording device." Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at the original Rule 35 as written. Was there a change to that? Or are you asking...
Yes.
Rule 35, there was, there was a change.
You got rid of Des Moines City Council, the location.
No, I got "All meetings of the city council," and then I scratched "held." So, it just reads, "All meetings of the city council shall be recorded by the city clerk on an audio rec," maybe I...
Sorry.
On an audio-recording device. That's how it's, that's how it was stated in the second.
Rule 36 also.
Rule 36, all I did was remove the word "tape" after "video," and after the word "and," "such tapes are." I just, so it reads, "After the address are recorded on video and cable cast within the city." I mean, this thing doesn't even state a timeframe. You could record these things and broadcast them in the city 10 years later, and you've satisfied the rule.
Record it on iPhone?
I mean...
Okay. Yeah, Dave?
Okay. This does come close to what I, it does clean up some of the stuff that's here now. It does allow for some expansion of citizen access to our meetings. I would like it, I wanted it to go further, and so, I'm very happy that you at least did what you did, because I know you can support my motions. I'm still going to kind of stick with my motions, but I'm happy that you were able to at least expand what's there.
Okay, Dave?
This is a conundrum, because I was going to accept Dan's, as the maker of the main motion, I was going to accept Dan's amendments. You know, yeah, there's a cost to making sure that there's, that people have access to things, and I don't have heartburn for the one or two meetings a year that we're going to hold outside of City Hall, you know, at most, for expending a few additional funds in order to do that. And at the same time, I recognize what you proposed in terms of a compromise to try and address some cost concerns there. But, again, I think that there's a cost to good government and open government, and so I find myself on the horns of a dilemma.
Which one is it for?
If this fails, you'll have an opportunity to vote online.
Was there a second on Councilmember Pena's motion?
Yeah, Carmen seconded it.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could clarify, Dave?
Yeah.
I would not want us, you know, finances go up and down, and the city is running pretty lean. I would not want us to not do an away game. That's my reference to going out and meeting in the community, and I would say that my hope is that we would do it three or four times a year. But, I would not want to have to forego one of those meetings because we were tight on money or couldn't find somebody to do the video recording for less than $1,000 bucks or something like that. I, I'm, I mean, if, maybe, if you, I just feel like the audio recording would suffice. And we could play that over Channel 21. You just show our...
With a Carmen Scott slideshow.
With a Carmen Scott slideshow. There you go. So, I would take that as a friendly amendment.
There you go. We've lost him. Carmen? I'm sorry. Someone else have a, you know, I'm trying to get a procedure done here regarding a substitute motion, addressing substitute motion first. Okay? In the event, let's say that passes, then. Okay. Thanks. All right. So, then we'll be, Carmen?
Do we have any way of knowing anything about the viewership of these videos of these meetings? Do we, do we know anything about it?
The best I can tell you is based on the 2,000 citizen survey that we did, and I'm kind of going from memory here, over 50% of the respondents, about 56%, said they had most of their information from the city, from city currents. And it was another 20% to 25% of the people that said they watched Channel 21 occasionally. So, how many actually watched? Honestly, I couldn't tell you.
What was the size of the response? 25% of what?
The 400 people that were asked.
Okay. But, my question is, trying to help me decide, is if we go to an away site instead of here, and let's say that quite, that several hundred people are watching in retirement homes or residences, and we don't video at the away site, and maybe 50 people show up or 25 people show up, and we've just taken away a great deal of dispersing information in order to serve a much smaller number.
And Lori did remind me, we can pull the numbers off the Internet to see how many actually pull, go to the Internet and watch meetings from the Internet, not on Channel 21.
I'm a little inclined to bite the bullet with Dave on the original amendment, if we're actually going to go away, because I think we'd be taking the video away from too many people if we don't video meetings just because they're in some other site. It bothers me that we'd have to spend the money, but I, I wouldn't want to deprive a bunch of people that rely on watching us.
Any other discussion? Okay, before us is a substitute motion. Everybody understands what it is. All those in favor of the substitute motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion on that?
Actually, it's acceptable to me and acceptable to Councilmember Scott.
It is?
It was now incorporated as a friendly amendment.
Can somebody read what that motion is?
It's exactly what he, Councilmember Sherman had submitted, so I'll read them. Rule 35 will now say, "All special meetings of the city council shall be recorded on an audio-recording device." And Rule 36 now will say, "All regular meetings of the city council shall be recorded on an audio and video-recording device and shall be cable cast within the city."
Correct.
And that's the end of my amendments.
I guess the question to administration is, how should we deal with the issue I raised about either the video equipment not working, the photographer not showing up, power going out? Do we, as a group, want the council to go home, or do we, as a group, want us to be able to complete our business as best we can?
Should we change the "shall" to "should"?
You know, the way it, the way it's written right now, it says "shall."
Yeah, Melissa?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Rule 36 to read "should be audio," should be videotaped.
Recorded on audio and video.
35 only pertains to audio recording.
But, if you don't have power?
Oh.
You should be able to record with a battery on it.
I can record with my BlackBerry.
Okay. So, audio and...
Rule 36, where's Dan's motion? "All regular meetings of the city council should be recorded on an audio and video-recording device and should be cable cast within the city."
Second.
And it's acceptable?
Well, yeah, and acceptable to me with the original motions, and maybe we'll give some consideration, strong consideration, when we review our capital improvement budget to a generator.
Or as part of our negotiations with Comcast and other providers.
I'm thinking of my poor Huntington Park board.
It was accepted by the maker, and that's all we can argue. Okay. So, it's substitute, it's "should." Yes.
I think I will move to table this ordinance until we have the remand from the committee come back.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? All favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have some people here from Huntington Park. So, we are listening to these, when you start to go home?
Yep. And the right... I am sure.
So, we're going to jump over to the city services through Huntington Park. And you are in my ear, are you going to be doing presentation? Yes, that means yes.
Yes, sir. I promise I'll be very brief.
Don't mind the council.
Last year, we received a request from the Huntington Park Association requesting city service, city services, in particular, restoration of the street sweeping, catch basin vacuuming, cleaning the pipes, doing some limited maintenance on the, on the single stormwater facility off of 249th. Just to situate everyone here, Huntington Park is bordered by, on the north, 244th Place or 244th Street, 250th on the south, 14th Avenue on the east, and Rainview Drive on the west. We annexed that area in 1982. Huntington Park was developed in the '70s and early '80s. There was a couple of streets inside that were public, 11th Avenue, which was vacated in 1978, and the Loop Entry Road, 248th here, was vacated when it was annexed to the city in 1987. So, all the streets within Huntington Park are private. All the storm drain system within Huntington Park is private. And the stormwater facility here off 249th is also private, and I don't think there's any argument on that. The request essentially was asking for those services or if services can't be provided, to provide a credit to their swim fees that they are paying in consideration of some areas off-site, which is Huntington Park is specifically delineated by this dash line here. The areas in yellow draining into Huntington Park, there's some public streets, 249th, areas of 9th Avenue, areas of 247th, and about 23 residential homes. If we were to calculate the fees that's generated from those areas, it would equate to about $4,300. I made an estimate of how much it would cost the city to do the street sweeping per the contract that we have with our sweeping contractor, cleaning catch basins, the pipes, and then doing the minimum maintenance on the pond would equate to about $5,300 a year, so about $900 more than, than these areas of yellow. There's three motions in your packet. The third motion is the staff's recommendation. That would be to deny this request. And then the first and second is doing the maintenance, but receiving a $900 payment to cover the added expenses. And then the other one is to provide, simply give them a credit of $4,300. So, that's, that's the motion that's, that's on the table here.
Earlier, we have with us Mr. Ben Gill. And earlier, I asked a team, what if he uses time now to address the council? So, it'll be a good time. Keeping in mind, Mr. Gill, that we are starting to rapidly run out of time. Not that that was your fault, by the way.
I shan't be long.
Would you, then, introduce yourself and your address to the record, sir?
My name is Ben Gill. My address is 24601, 13th Avenue South in Des Moines. It's a little close. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Pyasecki and staff. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. As I said, I live in Huntington Park. I am currently, have a good fortune of being the president of the Homeowners Association. I hope that all of you have that opportunity at some point. It's quite an education. In your agenda information, you have the letter from me dated August 31st to Mr. Pyasecki. I think that letter pretty well spells out our position, but I would like to expand on it just a little bit. As you may know or not know, Huntington Park... As you may know or not know, Huntington Park is an age-restricted community for folks 55 and over. As such, most of our residents are retired and living on a fixed income. In addition to the HUD guidelines regarding the age restrictions, we must comply with state laws governing associations and corporations. These RCWs dictate that the Board of Directors must act at all times in the best interest of the members. Directors of homeowners associations are held to a very high standard when it comes to spending association money. Our residents on fixed incomes not only appreciate lower costs, they have the right to expect that the board will drive a hard bargain regardless of what the service is, the product is, or who the provider is. And that's why I'm here tonight. The issue before you deals with the surface water management and private systems. Residents of communities owning private systems pay fees and taxes at the same rate as residents living in areas with public systems. But the question is, are the benefits between the two areas commensurate with the taxes? The city expends no money to maintain private systems. The city, in fact, benefits from our system. This cost is picked up by the residents in addition to the surface water fees. Because Huntington Park, as previously stated, is a private community, we also own and maintain our streets, sidewalks, streetlights, signage, and curbs. Again, we do not get a break on any of our property tax to offset this expense. I can come up with some benefit to owning our own streets. We do have some control over traffic flow through traffic and speed limits. I don't see such benefit to owning a storm drain system. And to add insult to injury, we kind of shoot ourselves in the foot, I guess, because we drive up our own property taxes. The prime directive for association boards is to preserve and enhance property values. This is how we build the so-called shareholder equity. We don't issue stock. Our value comes in the property values. We have an active and very effective architectural control committee that helps fulfill this mission by ensuring yards and homes are kept in good shape. Higher property values translate into higher property taxes. I targeted the surface water management fee because it is clearly identified on our tax statements. This is not the case with other tax revenues the city receives regarding street maintenance. So, that's not as easy to quantify. The question before you, do taxpayers supporting private systems, be they streets, sidewalks, or storm drains, that save the city money derive similar benefits as other taxpayers? And are we entitled to any relief to balance things out? Hopefully, you can see your way clear to approve either alternate motion number one or number two. I leave it in your good hands. Thank you.
My first thing I'd like to address is procedural. Having just read Council rules and Council Rule 19, it says all motions shall be made in the affirmative. And I happened to notice that Motion Two and Motion Three are written in the non-affirmative. So, depending on which alternative counsel would like to suggest, I would believe if the intent is what's listed as alternative motion number three, which is to deny the request, the appropriate action would be to do nothing. Alternative motion two, instead of denying half the request and approving the other half, I think the motion would be just to approve the half. So, if we get to the point of making a motion, I would point out those rules. As Chair of the Environment Committee, we did have a discussion on this issue. The council members were briefed. The committee was not -- my impression was we were not of the opinion that anything needed to be done. Now, I will admit, you know, I have some questions about, okay, the houses get their property tax statement. It's not clear to me whether the roads, a separate tax parcel gets a charge or not. I don't remember. But I think the dilemma, which could apply here in many places throughout the city, is when this was done as a development, it was done as a development in the county in a period of time when stormwater regulations were much different than they are today. To try and custom-fit every private scenario into current stormwater regulations would be onerous. And unless we dealt with every private situation, to deal with only one probably isn't fair and equitable or, you know, I don't know that the standard of all classes of people should be taxed the same since this is a fee instead of a tax. But I would believe there would be a similar theory that you shouldn't make an adjustment to one property for circumstance that you haven't investigated to see if there aren't 10 others like it. So, those would be my opening comments regarding this particular item.
And I want to thank you, Scott. You are 100% correct. All motions must be made in the affirmative. So, if anyone is hoping to have any of the motions, either two or three, they have to be ignored. And I will -- Who is that? Can I speak?
I wanted to comment on Councilmember Thompson's comments.
Oh, go ahead.
Actually, let me ask Lauren to make a comment. Because the issue of treating similarly situated swim customers in a similar manner is a question I did ask, and we did do some checking. We have some rough numbers to give you.
I'm sorry.
In regards to what would it cost in the way of refunds or credits if we were to treat other private developments the same way as motion number two would Huntington Park? Wasn't that about a $17,000 number you gave me?
To the street sweep, all the --
You sent me an email yesterday or the day before in regards to providing the same level of credit to other similarly situated private developments.
It would --
And grants running forward with the --
Yeah, it amounted to about, there we go, about $17,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to commend Mr. Gill and his board. I manage HOAs, so I step in when we don't have active homeowners and the board says to their owners, "Well, none of you want to do it, so we're going to make her do it." So, I end up having to study RCW 6434 and all of the language in there and how to keep dues low for owners and preserve the property values. And I think that the argument you bring forth is one I hear all the time, that owners and HOAs and PUDs and master associations, you're basically double taxed. And you're not in a unique situation living in an HOA in Des Moines. I manage a community in the Kent Valley that just -- we're just finishing up selling up 75% of the homes. City of Kent, 210 homes. They pay surface water management fees to the City of Kent, which increased 22% last year. They pay it individually as an individual detached condo owner. And then they also have to pay to have all of our roads maintained, our own roads swept, and our own storm drains cleaned. And on top of that, they have a local improvement district tax that they have to pay every year because the City of Kent built roads to their community. And we've got several bonds in place now for huge water retention ponds so that Reef Road, Fregor Road, and 212th can drain into our HOA. We had to levy a special assessment last year against brand-new homeowners who just bought this wonderful first-time dream home and, "Hi, welcome to your neighborhood. Here's your special assessment," because we have to come up with $22,000 additional dollars for water that falls off of your roof onto the City of Kent streets that we have to pay to pave. It happens in the City of Bonny Lake. It happens in the City of Auburn. It happens in the City of Redmond. So, I appreciate your frustration. Unfortunately, I -- it's not a unique one. So, I just wanted to comment that I think it's a longstanding argument with a lot of HOAs that cities, for the most part, love approving those plans because the entire infrastructure, for the most part, is maintained by the owner association.
Counsel, as always, I want to get a question out what time it is.
Is that close?
So, you want some center five or something else? What time?
I move to extend the meeting to 10:40.
Second.
Make a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. One pause. Okay, go ahead. Was it?
And that was it.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing no discussion, is there anyone to push to make a motion at this time? If there's no motion made, then simply no action is taken. I see no action being taken. Okay, which is paramount to actually turn up the motion of the grid. All right, counsel, there's no action at this time. Scott?
Based on the time of the evening, there were a few agenda items we didn't get to. I will move to continue all the other items to a meeting in the future to be scheduled by the mayor.
Well, Scott, let me ask a question real quick. On the Lake Haven one, is there a deadline for our review?
I believe the deadline's actually already passed. We have reviewed this with the Environment Committee. I don't believe there are any major issues or concerns that the city staff has, and none that I heard from the Environment Committee.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion. We've got 10 minutes.
You've got 10 minutes. So, we could, rather than have a full-blown presentation by Lake Haven, I think we gave you a pretty good agenda item, and the committee heard it. So, if there's any questions or a motion to approve, would be appropriate.
All right. Bob? Dave?
I move to adopt draft resolution number 10-167 approving the Lake Haven Utility District 2009 comprehensive wastewater system plan.
Second. Any discussion? Dave?
I was just going to say, you reminded me that this was brought up in committee, and I had to think back how far, how long ago it was before it got, actually got to us after we talked about it. But the wastewater plans always seem to address the concerns we have. It's always the water that takes closer scrutiny, so.
What point in particular?
I commend it for passage.
Did I second on?
I seconded it.
You did. Yeah, I seconded it, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
That appears unanimous. Okay. Resolution number 10-167 is a resolution to the City Council of the City of Des Moines, Washington, approving Lake Haven Utility District 2009 comprehensive wastewater system plan. Now, Scott?
Okay, now, I will move to adjourn the meeting and have all remaining agenda items scheduled for future meetings to be determined by the mayor.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Okay, we've got that ballot. Next meeting will be October 14th. It will be a regular meeting. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We are up here.